First order of business is the meetings. We've got two, two months meetings. One was from January and the other is March. So does anybody have any changes or in the minutes? Any, any correction?
I make a motion to accept him as submitted then.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, who's seconding? Is that it? Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's a minute or two. I want to say I too. My first order of business is Gary and Sue Ocinco, I guess. 28 Lake Celeste Drive, Garrison. I think he's a representative for them or?
Um, yeah.
Can you hear me? This is Juhi.
Yeah.
Hi, sorry, I don't have a video. I don't have a camera on this computer.
I know, I know what you look like already.
I was going to say I did my hair and makeup and no camera.
In your pajamas, it wouldn't make any difference now. All right, this is, this is a public hearing.
Hi Bob, this is, this is Evan Shapiro, 420 Indian Brook Road.
Hold on, I don't want her. Now, first one I'm gonna do is Gary.
Okay.
28.
All right, we're gonna go.
Okay. She's taken away, she'll, I'll get her next. Wait, let's wait. I don't know who it's, let's see.
Okay, so we have Sue and.
Gary.
And Elizabeth.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. Elizabeth Parks, the architect for the Onishinkos. I think Gary and Sue are here, but their camera's not working this evening. So I'm happy to.
Okay.
There we go.
They're there.
Okay.
Great.
Hi, everybody.
How are you? Oh, hi, how, okay. This is a public hearing for a, you're looking to get a variance for a deck that was pre-existing? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and you're looking for a variance for a extension?
That's also correct.
Okay, but extending it, you've got 60 feet required. And I guess the existence setback is 40.25 feet. Is that right? Or is that a deck?
That's the deck.
Okay, so, so you're looking for 19.75 foot variance?
That's right. That's for the, for the closer corner.
Okay, closer corner, okay. So that's a variance for that. And that, what kind of variance are you looking for the addition? I'm sorry.
Just for, just the front yard setback is the only issue we have there.
What you had setback, what is there now? What's required?
60 feet required like the deck. And we have, the existing house is actually 32.14. But the, but the addition is off the, you know, the house is at an angle to the property line. So the addition is off a different corner. That's a little further away.
Okay, so what kind of a variance are you looking for? Give me what number?
So from the, the furthest out from the addition or from the existing house, the, the variance is a little less than three feet. The proposed is 57.27.
57.27.
And then the other corner that touches the house is 48.53. So that's a little less than 12.
Do you have that?
Yeah, that, that, that's correct.
Okay.
That's what I have.
Okay, good. Now, I saw, I got some letters, I believe, from emails. Let's see. Comes from neighbors, I believe. First one is from Tom. Tom and Deborah Ford, it says, they're at 40 Lake Celeste Drive. It says, don't make it certain. We are the neighbors of the, how do you spell last name? How do you correct, pronounce it?
Onishenko.
Oh, that's a good, okay, I'll get that one. Onishenko, okay.
Perfect.
All right, perfect, all right. That's a nearest 40 Celeste. And they said, we're neighbors of Onishinkos. We fully support the application of this variance. Okay, I have another letter from, another email, I guess. Copy of an email from, let's see. This is Dan and Roberta Lusker from 28 Lake Celeste Drive. And they said, the Onishinkos family live next door to us. They have been good neighbors and dear, even friends. And have kept us aware of plans for expanding their home. We have no objections and if any questions, please call. I got a third one from, let's see. This one's from Keith Hasenberg and Kevin Green at 35 Lake Celeste Drive. As neighbors across the road from Gary and Sue Ocinco, we are delighted that they wish to upgrade their home. We have seen their plans and feel that the work will enhance both the home and neighborhood of Lake Celeste. In the short, in the short time they have owned the home, they have already become caring neighbors and active in the community. And then we got a fourth one. Why are you guys looking really popular up here?
It's a good group of people, I have to say.
That's a nice way to live. I am close David Ocinco is living directly across from them. In a small cul-de-sac of Lake Celeste Drive. I am aware that they are planning to build property. They have no reservations or objections about their plans to build their great neighbors and members of our community at Lake Celeste. So we've got a good, a lot of good signs there, that's for sure. All right, if you want to go over the five factors of that, of this. What the five factors are, is what the board uses to determine the value of the, of the application. First one is what possible detriment would the variance have on nearby property? Proposed addition covered by the requested variance will be located on the west side of existing house and therefore not visible to the neighbors. On east side or a natural landscape between the other neighbors. What impact would the variance have on the character of the neighborhood? The subject property is located on private roads in the community of Lake Celeste, which has made of several properties around Lake Celeste. And you see all your neighbors are four, so if you didn't get the variance, how else could you build or what you want to accomplish your goal? The current setback to clients for the property do not allow for any allowable alternate locations for the proposed addition. What is the code requirement you seek to vary? And we discussed that southeast corner. The proposed addition requires a variance of 11.47. And the southwest corner requires a variance of 2.73. And existing deck is to be legalized, requires variance of 9.75. What impact effect would the variances have on current physical environmental conditions to the area? Proposed addition would have limited impact on existing environmental conditions. The runoff of the 278 square foot of new roof area will be retained on the site. No blasting or grading will be done. Number five is the variance request to result with self hardship. Proposed addition is a self created hardship, although as noted above, given the benches of the lot, there is no allowable alternative location. Are there any board members have any questions?
No.
No, anybody have any questions? No, okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this? No?
No hands up.
No hands up, okay. And we got plenty of letters from the well-loved neighbors. So, okay, at this point in time, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
I know, close the public hearing.
Mrs. Stone moves to close and Paul, you second it?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is closed. Now I'm gonna call for a roll call vote on the two variances. One is for the deck and the other is for the addition. Paul?
Yes, on both.
Okay, Vinnie?
I vote yes on both also.
Okay, Grant?
I vote yes on both.
Okay, hold on, I gotta go to my phone call here. Think this is easy? Ronnie? Okay, Ronnie votes yes on both. I vote yes on both. Okay, so now all you gotta do is, your architect will call the building inspector, code enforcement office tomorrow. Tell him it's been approved and he'll tell him, tell her what to go do from there. How to proceed.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, next one is gonna be, let's see, 420 Indian Brook Road.
Okay.
Julie Lee.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. All right.
You revised the plan.
Yes, it was actually separate from your question regarding the wetlands. But the client wanted to simplify the project and take out the home office from the lower level.
Yeah.
So that's.
You shortened the building a little bit too, right? It's sort of 33 feet or something is gonna be the only change?
Yes, that enabled us to shorten the building too.
Okay, well, that takes away the wetland problem. You know, I'm trying to say that, that was the issue for you anyway. So that's all cleared up. So are any board members have any questions here?
Yeah, so are you building a one and a half car garage still? Or are you building a smaller garage?
Still, the garage itself, I'll share my screen.
Hold on, let me get scared. Share.
Hold on.
Nope, I'm just waiting for permission. Okay, there we go. All right, so the, the garage is still one and a half, meaning, you know, there's one car garage and some extra space for storage. I mean, it's not really a, a big garage. As, as stated before, this wall moved in a little closer this way. So are, you know, we're healthily beyond our footing. I'm sorry, our footing and, you know, disturbance can be stayed outside of the 100 foot buffer zone. And we, I mean, we will still go through the guidelines that, you know, that a conservation board has set out in the, flagging the wetland area and then surveying the points. We know those rules and then erecting the silk fence along the 100 foot setback, et cetera. So we, we know the, the basic guidelines. But Mr. Garfinkel will give us further guidance to just make sure that we don't have runoffs into the stream, et cetera.
Okay, at this time, I deem that this application is complete. Does anybody have anything else, any other information you're looking for?
I just, I just wanted to know, I mean, maybe this is premature to talk about. But where is the garage in relation to the house? Because I, I didn't see it in the drawings that, you know, the two, what the relationship was.
Okay, so this is the existing house.
Right.
Do you, do you want me to go back and go zoom out to this, the property? This is a tax map, the Indian Brook Road that wraps up. This is on the, I'm sorry, the east side of Route 9. And so this is our client's property. And the only access through it is through a private road, through their neighbor's property, which is shown in the survey here. So this private property, private road leads to their property. And, and within that, so that's the existing house on the survey. And we just added a little more detail with the roof line. So that's the existing house and proposed garage is here. And that's the, really the, you know, right adjacent to their driveway and their driveway terminates here. And there's, we can't really build any, here there's a hill, hill raised hill, the tennis court. And I believe they have pool here. And this is just going down, of course. So this is just about the only place that we can place it. And, and we learned that this is referred as a side yard. Because, well, long story short, we first weren't sure if, because we don't have a direct access from Indian Brook Road, we thought the entry point was the front yard. But luckily, this is 30, we're, is considered as a side yard. And therefore, our encroachment is much, much less than we had first thought. So yes, that's our side yard setback right there.
Well, I think this is completed. I'd like to set it up for a public hearing. Can I get a motion if the application is complete?
I'll make it, I'll make that motion.
I miss, Mrs. Stone made the motion. Did I get a second?
Seconded.
Who's second by who? I'm sorry.
Brandon.
Okay, right, a second, okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, uh, this way, what we're gonna do is we're gonna set this up for public hearing for next month, which is May 10th.
Great, thank you.
That's gonna be at town hall.
Oh, in person?
Oh, in person, live and in person, right. That's it. I have to fix your hair.
Thank you.
Live and in person. And you're, as I say, the letters will be sent out to the surrounding neighbors and all that. You work with Cheryl on that.
Okay, great. Do you need a formal letter from Mr. Garfinkel stating that this is a no wetland permit application?
No, I think I already got it from, by doing emails from him or something like that, so.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
He could, that's fine. Because we can see that you moved it, you know, away from the wetland, so on. It shows on the, on your drawing, so we're comfortable with that.
Great, thank you so much. All right.
So you're set then for May 10th and, and person.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
You have to see the new town hall.
Oh, I know, be vaccinated fully.
Everybody talks about it, that's for sure, okay. Let's see, let's see you then.
Thank you very much, bye-bye.
Next one is gonna be, let's see, 28 and 30 Hudson River Lane. It looks like they got a representative, James Harford, is he here?
Yes, I'm just moving him over and the homeowner as well.
And homeowner as well, okay.
Hi, folks.
Mr. Harford?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
I fixed my hair too.
I need, owners are here too? Okay, I looked at, what I did for is we have to look at your application, see if we need anything else, something like that. So one thing I could tell you, we need, I don't have any plans.
You don't have plans?
No, interior, interior plans.
Interior plans? Yeah, we didn't do, pardon me, as-built drawings because the plan is to tear the houses down.
I'm sorry, the what?
The, we're going to, the plan is to remove both houses, so we didn't do interior plans of those houses.
Yeah, but there's no way of us knowing what you're gonna build. I mean, how many, how many bedrooms are gonna be? How many bathrooms, internals, so on and so forth? You know, I, I didn't walk it a little bit, but first of all, let's, though we're all familiar. I think a couple of years ago, there was the same type of application on this property. You're aware of that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, are different owners though? These are different owners?
Correct.
Different owner, okay. And they need a few variances and they're gonna need a special permit because it's gonna be over 25% on it pre-existing. Now, I'm looking at your plans, your, your, your site plan, page A-30. All right, I see the first, you got two, I'm looking at squares unfortunately. You know, the first one says, propose two-story and, and four-bedroom, single residence on a combined lot. Okay, so let's go with the top square, the one that doesn't have the garage to it. Okay, what's gonna be in there?
Okay, right now, we're working on, you know, some conceptual plans. We didn't want to get too far ahead with the, out of concern that we were just spinning wheels on this.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the, the top square is going to be residential use. At grade, it's bridging over, over the soil. So it's not, you know, it's not touching the ground, you know, where that bite of water comes in. So that they have access to the boat launch there. So the second story bridges over that.
Okay, now, is that gonna have a foundation at first, that's what I'm looking at?
The, the top square with the diagonal hatch will, the, the part, the grade that's called unobstructed pass-through at ground level, that will not have a foundation.
Okay, now the second one where it says proposed story with the garage, is that gonna have a foundation too?
Yes.
Okay, let me tell you, you know, the issues we had last time, okay? A couple, a couple of board members had concerns that being the fact that, like you say, you've got an unobstructed pass-through here. So what's that, 15 feet?
Yes.
Okay, and then you have a bridge that connects the two structures, right? Well, it looks like us, yeah, the last time, it looked, the plans were pretty much similar, that it was two structures. The problem the board had with it was that this forces the board, not forces the board, but comes up that we may have to give you a bigger variance. Okay, now, when you read the application, the first one, it's gonna be over 5,600 square feet, right?
I'm sorry, say that again, please?
5,600 square feet? Okay, so that's pretty, pretty good size. Now, if that, if it was together, if it was one true house, that would be a different story.
Right, it, it is one true house. We're not, you know, trying to pull.
After you say it's one true house, when it's two separate structures with two foundations. Explain that with me.
Because it's, it's literally bridging over.
Hi, this is Jenna. I just wanted to add to that. We're, we're the owners of the property now. It's not an external bridge. It's a, it's a closed, like, it's like a living room almost. It's all, it's all connected. It's actually the house. We just wanted to leave the boat ramp open for usage. But it's not open and separate structures. It's one home. Does that, does that make sense? I don't know.
Well, it makes that you say it, but I don't have it. See, I don't have it.
Yeah.
So, you guys, now, I'm not trying to say, you know, how you should proceed. But we can't do anything without plans. We can't, how are we gonna, you know, make any kind of decisions here? We don't know what's what. Really, all I'm looking at right now is two squares. You understand what I'm saying?
Bob, if I, if I'm to jump in, are you saying it would be useful to the board, basically to, to have a visual of what this structure is gonna look like? As opposed to, you know, just, you know, sketched in, you know, footprints on a map?
Yes. Right, something, anyway. If you don't want to go through full, full blueprints or like that, we have to have something. Because at this point in time, you know, I'm looking at two squares, you know? And I don't know what's gonna be in each square. And that, see, that unobstructed pass-through, if that wasn't there, we could put those two buildings together. And that's 15 foot less variance we have to give you. Do you understand this, Willa?
I do, yeah. We just, we wanted to keep it where we could access that. It's unfortunately, it's in the middle of the two properties is the access to the water. So we wanted to leave that open if, if we ever down the road have a boat. You know, that is years down the road, but we would probably, you know, we, we've talked about connecting the decking between the two. We want it to feel like one home. You know?
Would it be possible to get a diagram or a visual or something to assist the board? So that they have an idea of, okay, if you're standing on Hudson River Lane, this is what the proposed structure is going to look like in terms of, you know, how high it's gonna be, where it's gonna be situated in the lot? Is that possible?
Yes, of course.
Are you merging the two lots together to make it one lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the property line, I mean, now both are 100% non-conforming. So we're, we're reducing the non-conformance by extinguishing the property line between the two.
Right, but the total you're gonna have is gonna be a 5,650 square foot home. Correct?
You said five bedroom?
No, 5,650 square feet. That's, that's what I have on your, on your plans here, on your site plan. It says the first floor is 2,600, second floor is 30, 3,050, total of 5,650, and your proposed deck of 950 square feet. So 5,650 is a good sized home. And in that area, it is about what? Maybe 10 or 12 houses along that street, if I remember correctly, right by the river, right? That's Hudson River Lane, it's about a dozen houses there, you know? So what you have is space between the two houses. It only makes it look much bigger.
Sure. Well, it's currently, the two houses that exist were, I mean, the one is uninhabitable. That's, it was a two-bedroom. And then the one that we're in is currently a two-bedroom. So we were hoping to combine and have a four-bedroom.
Right. I understand that. But I'm looking at this, so unfortunately, when I'm looking at this, it doesn't look like one house. You understand what I'm trying to say?
Sure, because you're looking at the footprint on the first floor. I get it, yeah, that makes sense.
Of course, it looks like two structures.
Two different properties, yeah. Right, the most important thing probably for you is that connection on the second floor. And we sort of went off on the drawings just so we could get guidance and not spin too many wheels, you know?
You, you realize you're gonna need, you know, they're gonna need, it's in a wetlands, you're gonna need wetlands. You're gonna go to before.
Yeah.
You know, it's a few different steps here, you know what I'm trying to say? So.
Absolutely.
A lot involved, it's not gonna happen overnight, I guess, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Yeah, we, we know. We've been in front of the planning board and the conservation board.
Right, and I have reports, I got a report from the planning board and all that. And I'm pretty sure you know what you're in for, is how many, how many permits you have to get and everything else like that.
Yeah, we're aware.
Okay, all right. And we're not, I'm not trying to discourage you. I'm just trying to tell you how it looks to us and so on and so forth. You know, right now, I'm looking at squares on a piece of paper.
Yeah, no, and I apologize. I think we, you know, as our team with, with James, we were just thinking, let's not get too ahead of ourselves because it is such a special, unique area. And we know that there's history with this, the two lots and the combination. And we want to make sure that we're respectful. And so we were like, let's get all the guidance in this meeting. And then we would go back with plans, but perhaps, you know, that makes sense. You need to have something to react to.
Yeah, if it's not a, you know, if it's not a square foot, you know, ideal plan, fine. But I'd have to see something. The board would have to see something to, you know, how many bedrooms are gonna be, how many bedrooms are gonna be here? What's the roof line gonna look like? Is it two-story, three-story? Because you got here, you're gonna have a, expanding to a three-car garage and then put living space above that. So, you know, we have to have an idea, you know?
Yeah, you just see it, that makes sense, okay.
All right, so if you can get that for us for the next meeting, Mr. Harford, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
But is that possible for the next meeting? Our next meeting will be May 10th, it's up to you.
What, by what day do I need to have your, the submission to you?
Still, Cheryl, I'm sorry, Cheryl, what date would you have to have that? Please come check it on now. This has to be mailed to her, she has to mail it to her.
Right.
It'll be like a week to take a look at.
And is there, can I ask if there's any guidance as we develop that? Because of course, we have a lot of ideas, but we want to make sure we're not completely in left field. And it's pretty, you know, standard, I think, what we're doing, like in terms of a house. But is there, is there, I don't know.
Oh, you say, you say standard, I understand what you're saying is standard, but does it? You're in a unique neighborhood down here.
Yeah, that is not standard, I'm aware.
Okay, all right, you know, so.
Far from it.
Plenty of meetings with houses down there, okay? You know, I'm trying not to discourage you, but there's one at the end, there was one at the end. There was a guy had built the house and he ended up, 10 years ago, he ended up having to take it down because he built.
I heard, we've heard, we've heard this, the, the history.
Neighbors there that are, let's say, interested in what's being done in the area, which is, which is, you know, fun. You know what I'm trying to say? So people are gonna be interested in what you're doing and all that, so. I can't see now, I'm looking now, it looks to me like it's two separate houses. That's what I'm trying to say. That's, that's what. If you have some idea, well, you're saying it could be one. If I was only two squares together, it'd be a different ballgame. But you got these 15 foot apart.
Got it, you know, and I can see how, I know what you're looking at. And it is like, that's the first floor and they look, you know, because we were keeping that one area open. It looks like two homes. And I know that was an issue. So I wanted to make sure you knew that the second floor, it connects it all. And, yeah, we, I don't want two homes. I want one home. We have a one-year-old who's in the back, you're crying. And I don't, I don't want to lose him in another property and it, you know.
I don't want two homes, but even the other one.
But, you know, that's an option too. So, but for now, we want one home.
They already have two homes.
Yeah, exactly.
You're right, to put them next door, right, they don't get to that. Okay, so if you can get something to us, you know, is that possible, Mr. Harford?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And it doesn't have to be inch to the inch. I'm not looking for, you know, the exact, but you gotta give us a pretty good idea of what you're trying to do here.
Great.
Okay, good. All right, I'll set you up for, not a public hearing, I'm sorry, for another, to review this again. Our next, May 10th, but it's gonna be in town. The town hall is open, so it'll be there. You know where it is on Main Street there. You don't need a block, all right? Okay, great, so, okay, everybody sat there? Mr. Will.
Thank you, thank you for your time, yeah.
Well, we'll help you out anyway. Well, we'll help you out anyway, we're here to help you, we're not here to hurt you.
I appreciate that, yeah, we're, and we don't wanna, you know, we, I get it, we're trying to do, we're figuring it out as we go, this is brand new for us too, so thank you.
It's a project, because, you know, if it's two houses, putting two houses together is not the easiest thing in the world.
Yeah, it's uh, yeah.
Alright, happy tonight.
Alright, we'll see you again, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and uh, let's see, next up is um, let's see, Anthony and Diane French, one seventy-six Mountain Road, it's a proposed garage. Uh, it looks like they have a, it looks like they have a agent, Nick?
Yes, he's on.
Okay, Nick? Okay, Rokasas, is he here? Hello?
It's Nick Lisacatos.
What, Nick, what?
Lisacatos, and he should be on. There he is.
Hello, Nick?
Good evening.
Oh, I see you now, okay, oh, down by the bar, huh? So you're gonna be the representative for these people, you're gonna handle?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, can I, just for application, is to see what, you know, what, if we need anything else, yeah, yeah. I don't see what you're gonna need, is that, you gotta need a, a notarized thing from them, that you could be that, you could be their representative.
Okay.
Okay.
Specific, specific to the zoning board, the building department has that as a homeowner authorization form, um.
Okay, alright, then I can get, uh, Cheryl, our secretary, will be able to get that and mail it out to us, you've got a copy of that then, if you have that.
Okay.
Alright, cause the board has to have that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm trying to look at your application here, also, if there's any missing. Now, you're gonna put up a twelve hundred fifty foot square, what's the rise, or basically, right?
Yes, sir.
Where, and you kind of come to us because they only allow a thousand feet.
That is correct.
About chapter one seventy-five, uh, dash D, number ten, okay, um. I'm trying to look at this here and there, I'm looking at the plan. We're gonna need, uh, let's see what else you have here. Gonna need a survey. There's no survey here.
Okay.
Alright, so I don't know whether the building firm has it or not, but we, we have to, we have to see a survey. Okay, and they're gonna have to see uh, the deed to the house, and the homeowner.
Okay.
I copied the deed, uh, copies of the survey, and uh, trying to see what else, I got the drawing, so I have your drawing here. Okay, did anybody have any questions on it?
Uh, quick question, how many um, how many car garages is this going to be?
It's a, um, coming off the upper level, the way the hill falls off, we're coming in off the driveway. It's basically a one big door, he has a motorhome, he's trying to get inside. And because we're doing an elevated slab, it leaves some underneath storage, so we put doors underneath, but that's through a lawn just for storage, cause it doesn't have any other outdoor storage. So arguably, it's an open one-bay garage, but he's trying to put his motorhome in it.
Okay.
And uh, how many, um, is it gonna be a one-story garage?
It's, um, when you come in off the main level of his driveway, that will be the garage. And then, because the elevation falls off so much, we're doing a sus- suspended slab. So underneath, we've put a couple of garage doors for access for his lawn equipment, things like that. So arguably, there'll be a basement, for lack of a better term.
But no second floor?
No.
Well, the main, the main uh, entrance for the RV, is that gonna have an extra uh, tall door to get the RV in?
It, it is spec'd to have a fourteen by fourteen garage door. Um, it will match the, the house has eight by eight doors, it'll match that door, but it'll be a fourteen by fourteen.
Okay.
And this will be a, a detached garage as opposed to an attached to the house, it's detached, right?
It'll be detached, freestanding.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's why the survey would be useful.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely gonna have to have a survey. Um, Nick, you know if you have a survey?
I, I believe I dropped it off, cause I, I marked it on the survey, I'm, somehow it may have got mishandled with our paperwork, uh, but I will make certain you have one.
Well, we're gonna have more than one, we're gonna have to have seven copies.
Not a problem.
It's five people on the board, then, and secretary and the attorney, so uh, we're talking about seven of everything, like a, copies and so on and so forth. Uh, a letter of the deed and so on and so forth, I. Today, we did the vote whether this is complete, actually, it's really not complete now, okay? But if I put you off the next month, then, and then I won't even have to, be able to have the public hearing until uh, June or something like that, you know? I, I guess you're looking forward to get started on this, or?
Yes, sir.
Not earning it, so, uh, if it's agreeable with the other members in the attorney, uh, what I can do is uh, we can mark it complete, you know, uh, as long as these other things are gonna be included by that time. What I mean by that is what date does he have to have everything, uh, Cheryl?
Sorry, uh, the twenty-ninth of April.
Twenty-ninth of this month, okay, but twenty-ninth of this month, you're gonna have to have the copy of the um, survey, the deed and the letter of authorization uh, to Cheryl, our secretary in council, she can mail it out to us in a package.
Nope, I, like I said, I have it, I can have it to Cheryl tomorrow.
Okay, good, the quicker you can get it to, the better.
Okay.
Alright, then, can I get a motion to uh, deem this uh, complete?
I'll move.
Uh, uh, Mrs. Stone, marks are complete, can I, a second? Mr. Granite, uh, Granite, second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Paul? Right, okay, uh, alright, uh, Nick, I've got a second for May tenth. Uh, that's gonna be a public hearing, what happens, all letters are gonna be sent out to uh, the neighbors and so on and so forth. You can speak to Cheryl with that, about that, and um, it'll be at the town hall up on the main, you know where that is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, uh, you could be there if the owner wants to be there, it's fine, or like that, and if any neighbors have any interest or any concerns, he'll be, they could be there there also, so, okay? Alright, so you're all set, because I don't wanna hold you up another month.
No problem, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome, okay, I'll see you then, okay.
Have a good night.
Good night. Alright, uh, let's see, any new business? Any old business? Oh, okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I guess I'll do that too.
Ronnie jumped, Ronnie jumped through the phone for that one. Okay, so uh, Ronnie seconds it, Ronnie made the motion, so that's it, guys. Alright, so next month, uh, we're gonna be at the uh, new town hall, the chandeliers and everything, I mean, it's the elevator, chandelier, it'll be big time.
Sounds good.
Everybody, let's see everybody there, okay, Cheryl, is, is there any questions of what they're gonna call you on or all that, you okay with that?
I think I'm okay with it, I'll speak to Greg too.
I think, yeah, questions call me, you call.
Of course, thank you.
Alright, good night, guys, I'll see you.
Night.
Good night.
Good night, stay well.
Bye now.
Night.